All right, six o'clock, I'd like to call Parks and Recreation Order with the legislature. Ms. Pennington?
Here.
Ms. Valnapp?
Yes.
Mr. Valnapp?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the November sixth, twenty twenty four Parks and Recreation Committee meeting notes.
Second.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Valnapp?
Yes.
Mr. Valnapp?
Yep.
All right, so first, I'd like to thank everybody for all of their help, all the things you guys did down at the the community building for the Parade of Lights, sounds like it went really well. Wish I could have been there to see it all, but I appreciate everybody's efforts, I heard it was great, so. Um, so we do have the official winning of the um home decorating contest with first prize being Angela DeSalvo, nine nine oh five, East Center Street. Second place being the Deanne Met- was it Vegas? Yep, twenty uh ninety two sixty two West Center Street, that's second place, and then Brenda, I believe it is. Brenda Sailor, ninety eight sixty five, short drive, third place. So we will be printing out their certificates and handing out their prize within the next week. Does anybody have anything for Parks and Recreation? I don't have anything.
Um, I did speak with the um Hot Stove, they're gonna be having a meeting here soon. I told them just let us know what we need, so they're gonna include me in that meeting, so we know if they need help with anything, or if there's anything on our end we need to take care of for the upcoming hot stove season.
Were we gonna work towards trying to have them have a different spot versus that opening?
Uh, yeah, we, I'm, I'm looking into some fun things, I'm gonna talk to Ryan and Nicole about this, um, I just, since I went to that municipal league thing, I am a member of the grant finder thing, so I can get on there and look for all kinds of stuff, so we're gonna look up a bunch of stuff and try and get us some funds, but I would like to, what I discussed with Hot Stove is one of those side of the road like shed things that we uh moved down to towards the middle area, like where they have the dirt and all that, and it turns into their concession stand, so then they're not using our little old building and all that. I mean, it's, it's a long way to go, but it's, it's something to at least work towards.
Anyone else? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn Parks and Rec. Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Valnapp?
Yes.
Mr. Valnapp?
Yes.
Ready for?
Leslie? This is Leslie Wall, she is a part-time officer with the department, she can be swearing tonight, you guys can see her around. She's got some uh pressure stuff that she has to do, but we're gonna get it out and get her trained while she's going through this. Uh, this is Mayor.
Hi, nice to meet you.
So he's gonna swear you in.
All right. Raise your right hand. I
I, Leslie Wall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of Village of Wyndham.
The laws and ordinances of Village of Wyndham.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Will faithfully.
Will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Part-time police officer.
Part-time police officer.
For so long as I remain in office.
For so long as I remain in office.
Effective this day, November thirteenth.
Not the thirteenth, no, December.
Oh. Effective this day, it's December tenth.
December tenth.
December tenth, oh man, this is, this is. So this is her hire date.
Yeah, alright, oh, okay, that was her hire date.
Yeah, see, it's not me messing up, it's December thirteenth.
No.
So on this day, December tenth, two thousand and four, you are officially a part-time police officer of the Wyndham uh Village Police Department.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi, it's nice to meet you, I really appreciate it. Hi, it's so good to see you, Mrs. Claus.
And uh actually, there's more water in the sewer than money, more money in the sewer now. Not much.
All right, I'd like to call the committee of the whole order.
I told you I brought everybody, there's so many people coming. Yeah, they're tired of the cars.
Chris is gonna be out there, they're gonna finish the meeting, so. Let me get Chris and I'll have him, you guys don't have to sit through this.
That's fine, we'll see Chris.
He should be up.
Yes.
In the department?
Or here.
Um, any prior guests speak?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November sixth, twenty twenty four Committee of the Whole meeting notes.
I'll second that with no amendments.
Can we write this down?
Nice to meet you.
Good job.
Come on over to the floor.
Proud of you.
Sorry. Wow.
I know.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Altier?
Just staying.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Valnapp?
Yes.
Mr. Valnapp?
Yes.
All right, do we have any old business we'd like to discuss?
I can talk about the cars real quick.
Sure.
We have one left, and unfortunately, it's not starting. So I think it's gonna be a fuel pump. We've got it to turn over, I don't know what you guys wanna do, the guy had purchased it and I put him on hold until you tell me whether you want me to see if it's a fuel pump, I think he paid twenty-five hundred for it. Um, if we just wanna refund the money and we wanna put a fuel pump in it, and we could use that as the car we're sitting in when we do the the camera stuff, so that we're not using an online car that we currently have, so it's up to you guys.
Have you got a pool?
The park might be six hundred bucks, then you gotta pay someone to put it in, you sold the car on an auction though, didn't you?
Yes.
Well, it's his problem.
Did you sell it as this?
We did sell it as this.
Did it say in the listing that it was running?
Yes. It was running, it, we started it a week ago, it was running, and now we can't get it running.
And wouldn't the, the first operation is why it's not running?
Well, hey, tomorrow, we were gonna see what we could do as far as.
And then, and then we could make a decision on.
It was starting when we sprayed starting fluid into it, so we just gotta see if the fuel filter has any gas going through it, and if there's a vacuum or not. So I think that would be the first step.
Make sure it's open.
If it is gonna be if it is going to be a fuel pump, the easy way to fix it, and you wouldn't have to drop it, would be just a puddle on the backseat.
I like the way you said it.
And we could keep that as our car to do the traffic stuff on it, but if that doesn't work out, we'll find one eventually once we get an impounded car.
Problem I have is if we try and get it fixed and resell, we're gonna lose money, 'cause you gotta have a tone, because
Right.
You know, it's not running, and you gotta get it to a shop, the shop's gonna fix it. I don't mind keeping it, that's just my opinion, um, but I would like to see something back on it, lettered, whether it's Village Wyndham or anything. Um, just so it doesn't just sit there black in the, the way the graphics are right now.
Oh, yeah, no, I would.
Um, also, something we could consider too is if we do keep it, we could allow everybody to use it too, so it doesn't just say I owe for one, it's just a camera.
I mean, we could have a pool car so that you got it with classes.
Exactly, we'd not have classes, or if somebody needs to run to awesome town or something like that, we're not taking our pickup trucks and everything else out of town all the time, it could be.
I don't know if I trust that car.
Just something along those lines, we can, it can be a shared.
It's something that considers. Is this one the SUV, so what is this?
It's, yes.
It's in that bad a shape?
We kept it together with Band-Aids and.
I got you. How many miles does it have?
It's a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty drive.
Yeah, so it's probably about four hundred thousand idle land.
Okay, okay, yeah. You gotta just consider how much you want to put into it.
Right.
Cause if he does keep any brand, put some money into it. What year is it?
Twenty fourteen. The kid's, the kid's being reasonable, I told him to give me till the end of the week to figure it out, so.
Is there, is there a way to not, you, underdog?
I was just gonna say that.
What's that?
Can you drop off money and say you can have it for this price?
I, I mean, that's a consideration, if you guys want me to do that.
That's what I would do.
You wanna drop off the price for the fuel pump?
That's what I would think, but I would.
When we turn the key, you, you can't hear the.
Fuel pump.
Care, no, no, that's.
Probably the fuel pump.
And that, I mean, gas right now.
It'll hit up, it'll hit up either, they said, but it's not priming, so.
Yeah, if you don't hear it, it's not doing nothing.
Me personally, I'd say drop it to two thousand if he doesn't wanna take it for that.
That's what I would do, and if not, just keep.
We just keep it and figure it out at a later date.
Okay.
After the first year and all that.
Sounds good, Reid. We just went through, does anybody have anything, do you have any, no, you're good, okay.
Oh, before we go on, um, I would say, but removal has to be done within a certain amount of time if he does accept those terms.
Okay.
So it's not sitting there for three months and.
Yeah.
Right.
We're liable if something happens to it.
Yeah, I don't want it out there anymore, so.
All right, um, President's report, I don't have anything, Mayor's communication?
Um, I just wanted to reiterate about the, the Parade of Lights and the festival. Everyone did a pretty good job on lining up all, everyone that was involved, we did, did a great job, I was impressed, um, I was grateful that we didn't have any issues, only slight issue we had is that we might wanna try and uh get that traffic blocked off because there's a couple cars heading up towards us, but.
That's where I was driving, not with that.
Yeah, the one guy, he just turned on his hazards and kept going outside the road, like whatever, man, but um other than that, we're good, um.
Can we, I don't mean to cut you off, but while you're talking, can we get Roco signs to put up?
Yeah, I mean, we have cones we can put out, uh. We had everybody here for the fill-up cruiser, and so I didn't have, usually we, I have three people here that we can put up, and Tiffany was doing, they just started a Girl Scout troop, so she wanted to ride on the float with them, otherwise I would have had it blocked, had it greened, and so next year I'll have three for sure, so that we don't have that happen.
Yeah, I mean, if you park a cruiser there with the lights on, they can't go through there. Um, all right, and with that, um, next year I did wanna implement, I talked to Ryan about next year, probably around July, we start going through what ways we wanna put lights up, then by September, get all the lights up, so we're not waiting till the last minute when the weather's a little against us. Um. It was, um, we talked about the evaluations are almost completely in. We have to try and get some kind of funds for stuff, so I've been working on that, like I said, I'll talk with um Ryan and Nicole about some of the information I just gathered to try and get us some funds to get some stuff done, and some of the things I do wanna get done is down at the water sewer plant, get some of the stuff, the few of the guys have gave me some ideas about some stuff, so I have at least a phase one stage of what we could spend on type of stuff, um, I wanna get some stuff done at the park, we gotta get some stuff done on the roads and this, that, and the other, so. Long, like I keep saying, as long as everybody do what they're supposed to do, I can do what I'm supposed to do, so I just want everybody to do what they're supposed to do, and so I can do what I'm supposed to do, and I think we'll be fine.
Utilities?
Yeah, I just, um, I was checking the fund summary. Um, I'm surprised that we're in the red for about a hundred thousand in both funds, water and sewer for the year.
I mean, I'm nodding based off of some of the improvements that they've had.
That's what I was about to ask, how much did we have to sink in both?
Well, I know for one, the one sewer thing was like sixty thousand, and I don't know what, there was a big one while you weren't here, but before you had her, there was one up at the water department.
It was thirty, because he ordered it, I actually heard, he didn't order it, but it was sent, and I, did we get that pump returned?
Did we get the return?
That was like fourteen or something like that?
They sent it back, um, I don't know about the funds.
So we'll have to see if we got that money back, because that was one of the big expenses.
Yeah, I expected water to get a little bit of a hit because we reversed the rates. Um, but I, I thought sewer would be a little bit closer, but then we did spend money on filters and then other things, so maybe we'll get a better picture next year.
Well, I was, I was telling Ryan too, water has, we take a pretty big hit with their loans. Water, this year's, in two thousand and twenty-five, we pay out a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents in loan payments. That's huge.
We've been asking for to know what we were paying out.
Oh, yes, sewer, sewer pays out, uh, next year, we're gonna pay out seventy-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, those are just loan projects.
Right.
Loan payments, so when you, when you have a five hundred thousand dollar budget, that's a huge hit for water.
Yeah.
We really need to know after um two thousand and twenty-seven, that great big USDA loan payment that was a forty-year payment drops off, that, that drops our payment down to sixty-seven thousand in water. So we got three more years of that, including next year, so that payment, we make our final payment in twenty-seven. So that'll be huge, that's over sixty thousand dollars a year for that payment.
Right.
It's crazy, it's crazy, so that being said, that's where a lot of your big bulk money goes, is your loan payments.
Right.
So.
That was our, our water line to put in, I'm sure, that uh put in.
Down, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did call and speak with Rochelle, who was Mitch's assistant, I dealt with her in West Arlington when I was there, she's wonderful with finding money, and I was telling Sherri, there is money out there for like infrastructure, Ryan was talking about trying to get some of the sewer infrastructure done, so she asked me some questions, we're gonna work on getting that back. Um, she said unfortunately now you have to prove, you can't just, you have to prove you need it. But it's zero, it's grant money to try to start getting some sewer lines replaced, so if you have pictures, she said, if you have cameras, and Ryan said we do it when they, when breaks are happening, phenomenal for debt money. So we're gonna go to some.
Do we have maybe uh of the clay tiles still, or not?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure we do.
I don't know if you guys remember, but I remember that guy come in and came with the half, the, I had that on a flash drive.
Okay, good.
And it's bad, we had uh Keeney out there twice this week, and he may have called him back, I don't know.
Just make sure you're taking pictures, 'cause that's what she said, you have pictures of all these breaks that.
Well, those ones you can't take pictures of, 'cause they're jetting it, so there's no way to get a camera left. And that's just a temporary fix, you're just, you're just cutting path through.
Those clay tiles have uh were put in, what, in the fifties?
Oh, they also have lead still, right?
I think seventies in the.
Their suburbs are still living.
Seventies in the new homes and forties in the projects.
Right, I mean, that's, yeah.
And she looked up our LMI numbers, and I mean, we're in a great, you know, our household media, she looked all that up, and she said you guys are in a great position to qualify for some monies. So she'll start, she said just get the information of how much we're looking in some pictures, and she'll start working on it if we want her to. So I reached out to Mitch, or Mitch reached back out to me. He did, yeah, well, I was in a meeting, but he left me a voicemail, he said he sent you some stuff, didn't he?
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up.
Okay.
Yep, but in regards to the water sewer plants, we have so much coming out, and I believe, Nicole, you were gonna bring this up at one point, the rent discussion. And I know that it is a hot topic here, but.
It has not been taken out at all.
It's not been taken out since Ree left us.
Right.
And we are still going the wrong way with our water and sewer, or budget.
In my personal opinion, and I'm just looking at this, I, I came across it, some people were talking about it, and I came across, and I've been reading the minutes books and the ordinances books, and I'm trying to figure out what it was, but general fund is solvent, we are definitely solvent, so our salaries are all split between water, sewer, and administration. I don't see a need to be stripping them, what, water and sewer, they're already paying their own utilities, they're, and they're paying our salaries, so.
What is our, what is um our carryover this year?
For the general fund?
Yeah.
It's, right now, we started the year with six hundred and thirty-three thousand, right now, as of today, we're at eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, one twenty.
That's not bad, so that's about a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, so we're increasing, and that's even with our police budget being a little bit up for some changes we did in the police department, so we're still doing pretty good.
Yeah, anytime you, you get a hundred thousand or more, in a small budget like us, so maybe it is time.
So I mean, and it's something maybe we could look at freezing for right now, and looking back.
Well, we already froze it, didn't we?
Well, I don't think, I don't think.
Yeah, it wasn't coming out, but we froze it even though it wasn't coming out.
Right, I don't think it was ever.
I don't think Katrina Underwood said where it was coming from.
Right, that's what I thought.
And with, obviously, you know, we have money in the police department, we got two new cruisers, we have, you know, salaries are going up. We're, you know, doing well in the general fund, I would say, like you said, the carryover. I think we should.
I, I've always looked at, you should have at least a minimum of a hundred thousand, so if we got a hundred and sixty thousand as a carryover.
We have eight hundred thousand as.
Yeah, I mean, over.
Increase, we've increased it.
Right, about a hundred and sixty thousand.
Some of that is, she wasn't putting money in for the following year, so we did have a big hit, and you'll look at the, the increase, but it's still, we're still holding our own big time in general fund.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll have an increase with cameras coming, with the impound lot, that's gonna help offset some of his costs, but.
So if I bring a motion to get rid of the rent, can we vote on it, and then take it, make a recommendation for next meeting, to start January one?
It has to be on that.
Yes, absolutely, but we would have to vote for it now to make a recommendation, right?
We don't vote, yep, do we, do we vote on it?
Well, first of all, first of all, just make a recommendation.
We just make the recommendation.
You make a motion to recommend to council.
No, I will make a motion to recommend to council remove, to get rid of the rent for the water and sewer.
I would freeze it, that way if you ever needed it, you could freeze it.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, we freeze it, so it's not, it's not taken out anymore.
A lot away, yeah.
But if we need to enact it again, uh, you don't have to add new legislation, yeah, I like that idea.
So if you freeze it, don't you still have to vote to bring it back? Because we already had the legislation.
Yeah, you don't have to add it to.
Well, I think for.
You'd have to add it back if you didn't just freeze it. But we kinda had to do the three reads with the, you guys froze the water rates, and we still had to do three, three reads and everything, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We had to go through that whole process anyways, right?
Yes.
That's because the legislation said it's automatic five percent, now the freeze, you had to uh go against.
The rent is self-imposed.
Yeah. Can we backdate it, or do I have to take it out for the year? Number one, I can't even find how much it actually is.
No, you don't have to backdate it, 'cause we did, we already froze it, so I know for sure, last year, we said we weren't taking it out for at least a year.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So, yeah, so we don't, there shouldn't be anything anyway.
Yeah, I think we, we said that we were freezing half of it, right?
Yeah, we can just make it easy and say.
And then, for some reason, we never did that.
Just say we freeze it with no back money owed.
Yeah.
So Dave's gonna make a motion to recommend it, council to freeze not taking out the sewer and model rents, being paid general fund, is that how I?
Sure, with nothing owed from previous. I don't know, debts owed or something like that. However Charles wants to word it.
I do have a second, somebody's second. Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Valnapp?
Yes.
Mr. Valnapp?
Yes.
I did wanna say too, I have been transferring the money now into the debt service account, so water did have, um, you know, they're sitting, they have forty-three thousand dollars in there now to start making their payments for next year, they do have, plus I started making some um the reserve payments, so the reserve account for water is sitting with a hundred and twenty-four thousand, so we do have some money in there, there is some, some improvements that need to be made, so we don't have, until we can get past, I'm hoping until we can get past that big loan payment, is my thought, there is some money, sewer has fifty thousand in their reserve account, and they have fifty thousand to make their um debt payments. So I did make the one OWDA payments already came out of that for January one, they're due, so I already made those for water and sewer, I just have to make OWWC now. So, just so you know, we do have the payment sitting there. You said water had one thirty-two in reserve? Uh, one twenty-four. Water has one twenty-four, um, let's see, one twenty, yeah, one twenty-four, sewer has fifty. Sixty-four for their next year bills. Uh, loans. Loan, forty-three. For next year, love. All right, just, all right, no, thank you. Oh, did I take it? Sorry. Did I take it?
We're good.
Here, you can have this.
No, we're good, I can get one.
All right, um, finance.
She already gave it.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'd rather get it from you.
Personnel, thank you.
Back to finance, the water meter fund, then we buy meters, so shouldn't that be lower?
That's, no, we bought, yeah, that's with that.
Oh, that is with that, so we still have fifty-four, six ninety-seven.
Yeah, and I was just telling Ryan, we just got the information from Hannah today, Stallion, working on the new, um, the, the loan for that, um, for the OWDA, um, she is saying it's going to be three point three-four percent for ten years. She'll have the numbers done, and she's hoping the project will be completed by July first of twenty-five, for all the new water meters, and she also put that they're gonna be done in-house.
Right.
So.
And I'll say it was money, do it.
Yeah, so I just have, I sent the legal thing into the solicitor to sign, and then I have to get MAC to, so I can fill some revenue out, and I have to get um MAC to sign.
And that's for like six hundred and thirty or something like that, and we have like six forty-three?
More, yeah, I think it's seven something.
Or seven forty-three, right?
It'd be like six hundred and, roughly six hundred and sixty more.
Okay.
But doing it ourselves, we don't overwhelm Murray, if you get a company in here, they're gonna throw them all in there, she's got a.
What company's gonna cost us money too?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, because we, now, what we need to find out is, even if we do it in-house and we get that grant, I think we still have to pay prevailing wages.
Yeah, it's a loan, it's not a grant, yeah, I, I don't know that, but the money's not there, they didn't apply for it alone.
If it's a, if it's a loan, you might not have to, if it's a grant, I know.
But the money's, yeah, she did put in for the money for contractor, it's all in-house.
Would it be prevailing wages for the installers, you mean, like our employees?
Right.
Yeah.
But that's only if it's a grant, you believe.
It's, it's, yeah, it's all in mind she puts, so there's no monies at all for that.
That makes sense.
All right. All right, safety and personnel?
Okay, I have some evaluations, I need a few more, so I put December twentieth just on the email, when I get all of them, I'm gonna come up here, I'm hoping it's this week, copy them all up, put them all in you guys' mailboxes, so you can look at them. They'll be in an envelope like this, and um, so that we can discuss it at that last meeting, about raises.
So, I thought we discussed that they'll be done by this meeting, so we could go on executive and talk about it.
With this stupid new email, it just didn't work out that way, because I thought I was sending everybody emails, and taking them done by December sixth and here, nobody was using that new Outlook system, so I come to find out that it was pretty useless, you know, so so I had to resend it to that. So I had to resend it to that and to all the old emails. Hopefully, we won't have that problem next year, because everybody should be on the Outlook by then. Um, I don't know.
So they won't get their raise until?
Well, I actually wanted to ask, if at all possible, I sat through a u- eight hour UAN training yesterday. And I didn't realize that the thirtieth is awful late to have a meeting for a temporary budget, because we have payroll that week. So I was gonna see if there's any way we could do a meeting next week, like either Monday or Thursday, so we can set the temporary appropriations. So I can get them in, just so I can get everybody paid on time, if we do it the thirtieth and if something happens, you know, I, we have to run payroll on Monday.
I'm fine with that, we just, we only need twenty-four hours.
I gotta let Charles know too, so whatever we're doing.
Okay, I just hate to say that, but I didn't even think about payroll that week when we talked about the thirtieth. And everything has to be in the computer to be able to pay people.
Right.
So are we saying the sixteenth?
That's what I was asking.
What day?
I'm good with the sixteenth.
The sixteenth?
What day is that?
Monday.
Or Monday is it?
Yeah, I won't be able to make that one.
I probably won't either, because I have to go to Columbus that night.
Alright, what about the eighteenth, which is a Wednesday?
The eighteenth, I can.
I won't be able to do that one either.
Nineteenth?
My games are Mondays and Wednesdays.
What about the nineteenth, Thursday night?
I'm good with the nineteenth.
I'll go on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth is good.
You guys, as long as you guys make it.
I was gonna say, you don't have to be here, right?
Okay, you guys okay with that, I apologize.
At six?
Yeah.
Now, is that in place of the thirtieth?
So that'll be our whole.
So that our actual council meeting.
Yes, and then, then we can do the year end, whatever you guys, usually, usually do it at the beginning of the year?
Usually do it the first one too.
The fourteenth, so we'll just go back to that.
We usually do them like the fourth or the second or third or something like that in January, so everything's set. But can we not, you do it next week?
Yeah, yeah, we can do, I mean, the thing is, I don't have the wages and stuff, so.
And we won't have those until?
Well, yeah, look, even if we pass raises in January, we're still not back paying six months like we were last year, okay? That's what I'm trying to avoid, so now that Nicole's here and she's on the right track and everything is kinda, you know, getting straightened around for good. Then we're just gonna do it better next year, that's all, it's just taking time.
Yeah, we probably will hear that every year.
So, well.
How many evaluations do you need?
How many do you want here?
I don't know, I, I'm not quite sure.
We're fine, it'll be fine.
We need just like.
Most of them are in there.
Okay.
The police department, Rick's gonna give me those and.
Tonight, I just haven't had them since.
Yeah, that's fine, and I don't know, there's probably one or two missing, so.
So we can do that on the nineteenth then?
Yes, yeah.
She gets them all.
I will definitely have them distributed to you by then, okay?
Will be on the agenda, because we have to go to executive session before we can talk about them.
Sure. Okay, so on the agenda?
Okay, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, executive session, what are we doing, five thirty?
Well, no, we could do executive session at the end, or when we come out of executive session, we can vote on that one item.
Got it, alright.
Cheryl, what?
She might want to put that on the agenda, that motion, not fill it in.
Right, cause we'd have to verbalize it.
It has to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, get the raises.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got here late, I wanted to get here earlier, but I ended up at basketball, then I went to Elliot's house, and I'm sure Terry's talked to you guys about this. But I'm gonna try to push to get this, we're gonna try to put a levy on, cause we need an ambulance, and I just want you guys, hopefully you guys back us on that. Because, I mean, you know, you can ask, David can tell you the best, I mean, does anybody in here drive a car, other than me, does anybody here drive a car to order in two thousand and six? Cause that's what our ambulance says, it's coming to save our lives, so we need to get an ambulance.
And they're three years out from the time of order.
When I, uh, when I, it's not gonna help right now, but when I was in Tampa, they told me that there is a grant out right now for. You can get a new bus and gear and stuff like that.
You know, from like, how do you look that up?
Uh, I'll call her, I'll call her in a, yeah, I'll call her in the morning and ask her and I'll just give you a call.
Cause the last time we looked this was like last year, for a hundred thousand dollar value for three years, it'd be like sixty-four dollars a year on the house. Now, I'm sure that's all went up and the ambulance has went up, like he said, if we order it today, it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you pay for it today, but eighteen months or two years from now when it's built, you pay that price if you don't pay for it ahead of time, but we need to have an ambulance and.
Yeah.
Just hopefully you guys are supporting us too, so.
You never know what family member might be in the bag.
And that's what I said to people that I've talked to, you know, I don't wanna pay more taxes either, but uh I would rather, you know, you guys say no. And then if somebody dies, it's on you, it ain't on me, so.
They just got an ambulance at Bristol for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
A new one?
Brand new Penn Care.
The ones, we, the cheapest ones that we had found were, uh, probably three, three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's where they all, our commissioners gave us money for COVID.
I know, we, I went to that meeting.
They bought it.
They wouldn't do it for us, though.
They bought seven amulets for communities in Tremble County, the commissioners.
I think they put all ours into what Manway's water department, right? They did, turning two million or something.
I think the sheriff's office too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
There's only twelve of us making a hundred thousand now a year, so. But yeah, no, but really, we are gonna do it, I just wanted, I know Terry's probably talked to you guys, but I'm gonna push for it at this meeting to make sure, cause the last meeting we talked about it too. But we need one, at least we need to put it out there, if people, if people say no, it's on them.
Right, right, we, we did a levy, just so you know, for equipment only, and that sold people, people in Bristol voted, yeah, cause we're getting fire trials.
Yeah, that's.
Like, it states in there, you can only use it for equipment.
And we would, we used to have that, and then when we split, whenever they made a split or however that happened, I don't know how it happened, that went away. So they don't have the money that goes into that, so. Anyway, that was it, sorry to interrupt your meeting.
Thanks, Dan, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
What, are we still on, uh?
We're on Cheryl for service committee.
I had something for.
Personnel, okay, good.
We were supposed to talk about Brayman's raise for his license.
Um, yeah, I was gonna say, I wanna go on executive session, talk about a couple things, and I know we wanna do that in there, since it's personnel. And so it's not on camera and out in front of everybody.
Right.
Um, I think we should do it there, and then come out and talk, you know, whatever we decide, but I agree with Ryan, that needs discussing.
That's all.
Okay, Cheryl?
Um, I would like to give a, a special thank you to all the people that helped the inside and the outside, Angela.
Especially Angela.
Yes, she did a really good job on the lights outside, and her and her son was helping with the hot dogs and the, um. Hot dogs and the hot chocolate, my sister, she helped, I mean, I was talking to TBA. The guy that was down there at the Dollar General, and I told him, I said, we might be a small town, but we have a big heart. And he says, I've heard a lot of good things about Wyndham, and I said, well, when we work together, we thrive. You know, and I said, you know, when we come together as a community, we get this, and people, there was no arguments, no fights, no nothing. Thank you, Jesus, but that was good, and people are looking forward to it next year. This one lady said, you're really rocking it, Mrs. Santa, and I said, thank you. But it, it was a good time for all, and I wanna thank everybody who helped and participated.
You good, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, David?
So Mitch got back with me, uh, he sent me a couple things I should've sent to you guys, I apologize. Um, but he, he sent me two things essentially, one talking about uh the tap-in fee being reduced. Um, and then it says, the amount of reduction is up to us, but we maybe wanna be conscious of the in-town tap fees. Because he might have some angry residents, uh, if we uh lower it and somebody else just tapped in, they paid full price. You know, that kinda stuff, so we should consider that, uh, but he said some clients do, do reduce tap-in fee while the ditch is open. Um, and then he sent me an example of the deposit, he says usually, um, just about five hundred bucks. Um, and then if there's enough deposits to make the project feasible, then we move forward with it. Um, so that's how we would gauge if we go forward with the project, is how he usually does it. Um, and then if we are successful getting funding, we move forward with it, if we are not able to obtain funding for enough do- deposits. Then we refund all the money that's been made. So, and then he sent me a frequently asked questions page, uh, with a whole bunch of information I'll send to you guys.
Okay.
But really, we just need to decide if we wanna do the reduced tap-in fee while the ditch is open and what we want the deposit to be. So I can get the information together and start getting flyers out to that section.
So we discussed what, five hundred, I believe, so we do tap in five, what we do to cover the whole village is open it for that window. For the whole village.
New comes in once.
So then that way, cause obviously if you already tapped in, you're not gonna re-tap in, so.
Right.
It's not like we're gonna be taking a major hit, but, but I guess, yeah, we open it to village and township.
And then, so we'll do five hundred while the ditch is open, um, and for the whole town, if anybody else were to tap in. And then the deposit, you wanna stick with five hundred, so that way people are kinda, you know, they're serious, but it's not a big hit to the public. And then we can refund it, if, um, we don't get the funding or we don't move forward with it. Then we also need to make a, with a separate line item for that.
Is the deposit and the tap-in the same?
No, the tap-in is what you actually pay to get in deposit, well, I guess deposit could be. If we make it the same, it would go towards your, your tap-in.
That's what I was saying, when you were saying five hundred, five hundred.
Yeah.
But that's just to say, like, if.
So it's not a thousand, it's just five hundred?
It'd be five hundred, but.
If you go around and you ask everybody, and you're like, yeah, what's that been, and you spend all the money and you put the, the. If they put the five hundred deposit down and say, yeah, I wanna do it, and when it comes through, that deposit becomes a tap-in fee.
Correct, yeah, so we would just have to figure out, when we do go and do the flyers or if we go door-to-door, however we do it. We figure out a way to where, okay, we do wanna do that, they come into the office, they make that deposit, get a receipt, money goes into line item so-and-so. And then we s- get a hold of Mitch and say, alright, we wanna move forward with it, we have this many deposits or we don't.
Do you have to go to a public meeting?
Yes. You know, and once it starts, like, if we get it and we move forward on it, once that ditch starts opening up. More people will most likely be like, you know, I'll need to go ahead and get in.
And for five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
To get good solid water, you don't have to worry about ECA breathing down your neck because your well is bad or anything like that.
What's our normal, is it three thousands?
I think it's, uh.
I feel like it was more than that, I think, I feel like it was between three and five.
Five thousand?
Tap-in fees, twenty-five fifty for water.
That's about three-quarter inch.
Yeah, it just says tap fees.
Okay, twenty-five.
I think that's ours.
It's based on.
I thought it was more.
Like me, I might be wrong.
But, still looks good, huh?
Yeah.
I know we, we opted for quite a bit at one point.
Yeah.
Uh, when, I think Maurice was here, right, and I thought we. It was only like fifteen hundred, and we, we bumped it up, I don't remember what it was.
So, uh, we already started the legislation for that, or is that gonna start now that we have the set?
We're waiting to see.
Okay, so for next meeting, we'll get legislation on there to set that both in stone. And is that three reads, or is that like an emergency?
Three, we're not doing it immediately, so we're just doing three reads and, um, well, we have to schedule some public meetings too.
Yeah, so that would be December, January, February, so we can do February or March. Committee meeting for our first public hearing. And then we can get flyers put together for that March to start going around.
I'll, uh, I'll attend the township meeting to inform them also.
Alright.
This project would go where?
So this project would take us from where the water line, I think it's essentially Wolf.
Right, Wolf to Wolf.
Yeah, Wolf to Wolf essentially, and including Crestview, Geneva and Mysteria. And possibly going under eighty-two for a couple houses, because Wishcall has a sister. If we can get her to get in, uh, but essentially down eighty-two Horn Road.
That leaves the door, after that, it's just a little, uh, skip, jump, and hop away from the trailer park.
Well, also.
You already got it up eighty-two.
Mitch, Mitch was. Sorry, go ahead.
That's it.
Mitch was talking about including in this funding, going under the turnpike to close that loop, or that dead end.
That would help a lot of people, especially on, on Wolf, with hot water tanks, whatever you.
Yep, and that would get our turnover rate better too, but he said he could include that in that grant, so.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so here's my question, because I'm on the small water tank, or, you know. Cause I'm on Wolf, and so if they go under the turnpike, and that's essentially to put us onto the big water tower? Or no?
It's all the same.
It would be the same at that point.
Okay.
It's all the same water.
Okay.
Cause right now, we supply, what, ninety-seven per- or ninety-three percent of the village with one water tower in our Clearwell.
Okay.
Uh, we went into, it's all the same water plant, so.
Right, but your pressure pretty much supplies that one tower by the fire station, supplies everything but you and Horn Road, pretty much.
I just don't wanna have to pay a tap-in when I've already got city water, you know what I'm saying?
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be connecting to the, the system.
Alright.
Cool, hey David?
Yep.
I have nothing for the planning commission, uh, please?
I think I gave everything, I know next week they're coming to install the internet, so I told him, so I'm waiting. I haven't heard anything, I called the engineer as well, Brian's calling, I don't know, have you heard back from him?
Uh, he is out till the thirteenth.
Okay.
So basically Monday.
Okay.
Because I think.
Thirteenth is Friday.
Yeah.
Is, um, has Mike signed up for the SRO training?
I think he already had it, I'm not sure, I'll find out for sure.
Does he attend the monthly training that you mentioned?
So what best case, when do you think that the police department will be moving?
We can go as soon as we get the okay.
Are we gonna move stuff over without that?
I don't know.
Cause like some of the unnecessary stuff that.
That's where I, that I packed stuff and I thought, I wasn't sure, I didn't wanna do it premature, so.
Alright, Zoni?
Um, okay, so I issued a driveway permit over in the new homes.
Speak up first, please.
I, well, yeah, anyway, issued a driveway permit, no. Um, I'm waiting on an application from Brightspeed, we're kinda communicating for, for a right-of-way permit, so. Before I start digging out there, I think it's on three oh three, all around new homes, isn't it?
She said three oh three first.
What, is that the internet, the fiber stuff, right?
Is that fiber?
Yeah, um, I had a guy.
I, I got a question on that real quick, I don't know how much information you have on that, but if they're going through, are they going in the right-of-way? On the road, or are they going on, uh, Central Link's old lines, cause I believe Brightspeed owns Central Link.
I believe it's off, she said they were going off, they are boring, which I asked them, when they replace stuff, do they? Cause I'm like, I don't want crappy replacements if you have to replace stuff, she said they do good work, so I mean, it's one of those, uh, kind of see.
Yeah, I was just curious if it was road or backyards, cause I know Central Link goes through every backyard in the new homes, the way they built those. All the phone lines were going that way, along with the electric.
I think it's going down the road, ain't it, the way?
Yeah, they're going down the road to hook up the main thing.
So you'll be seeing, like, the tree people right now, I think everyone's seeing them, what that is, is Ohio Edison probably has them out here. They're cleared for the lines. They're cleared for the lines, so.
We need to get, make sure they register with the village, so they can.
The tree people?
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen them, I've, I've talked to them.
Form in the office, they'll be around for a couple weeks, so there's plenty of time.
Mm-hmm.
But they, they need to register.
Now, do we charge them? They'll see, this was stopped a while back, is what I brought up last meeting, um.
No, I think it's just, right now, the way our setup is, is if you're soliciting, or if you're coming in here to do work, you're supposed to register in case something happens. And we're not stuck in a situation with sidewalk and the gas company.
So how, don't we get like, a little bit of money for that, though, like taxes or something at the?
Yeah, in Rita.
Rita's gonna find them, we don't have to really charge, they're gonna.
Right.
As long as they know they're doing work, and, um, that's what that form is supposed to be.
That's what I was talking about last meeting, that kinda has been.
You just, if you see them out, you can just tell them they go to the office.
Yeah, I see them quite a bit.
And Marie, they got those papers in there, because there was a concrete guy out here. And I asked him, you know, if they needed help or something, they pulled right up in the gravel. And I go, we're just right here. Marie can do the rest, you just.
Okay, but that's what I was talking about last meeting, there's so much traffic through here anymore. Um, okay, so, thank you. Uh, I had someone reach out, wanted to build a house, everyone Stanley directed him to Jacob's suite. And tomorrow is our end of the month regional meeting, and actually, I made, I think, all twelve meetings, Ryan could've went with me. But anyway, they're gonna have some refreshments at the tail end of the meeting tomorrow, if anybody wants to go.
I got basketball practice, so I love to go.
Hey, I had a thought, not, this kinda, this kinda off zoning, I was thinking, you guys talk about your money stuff up there. How come maybe with extra money, not get rid of some of those loans, just wondering? You know, the one that's paying, costing you a lot, just saying, I know that's off zoning, but, you know, where it's costing you, it's gotta go out to twenty-seven.
Zero percent, which is nice.
Yeah, those USDA, but I'm just saying, you know, if it's cost a lot of money, maybe get rid of them.
Well, I think the thing too, is if we get rid of them now, and we have something pop up, you know, a week from now, then we are up a creek without a battle.
Well, maybe just pay extra, cut it, and I'm just saying, that's how I roll.
Um, Chris, I had asked before, can we get a report just typed out, uh, at the committee meeting of your month, like past month?
Yeah, I'm not having.
Addresses and just what you issued.
I'm not having much going on, I got my whole year, if you want me to try and get it figured out.
Well, no, just monthly, so that way, if, you know, one of us are driving around and we see a new fence.
Right.
We got that paper, if it's not on there, then we can get paid, Chris, just so you know, this is going in.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
But it is slow right now, I, like I had, I didn't have none last month.
In fairness, we're not going in inspectors either.
Yeah, we're not.
Absolutely pay it forward.
Right.
That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Okay, alright, Ryan, Phil's ministry?
Um. I don't really have a whole lot, um. I could've talked about it in, um, utilities, but, um. We've got to do something with our SCADA system. For, for two reasons, one, the emergency call-out. And I'll let Brandon elaborate a little more, but, and two, computer we have is not even compatible with this eleven. So there's two different, um, we've got.
But, can you explain what SCADA's?
SCADA's, uh, supervised control data analysis. But it's, it's what operates.
Computer switches and valves.
This one operates the water.
Is that what makes it run itself?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the brains of the whole operation.
Okay.
And, um, so now that's one of the, uh, it's gonna be an issue. Uh, we got one quote for the emergency call-out, which is pretty vital. Say if we have a pipe busting race and everything.
That's gonna probably happen every time.
Yeah, alarm, radio, wall motors.
Right.
You're talking tens of thousands of dollars. It's not gonna call out.
So what are the two quotes we have?
This one Brandon got, and I'll let him go over it a little better, this one is eleven thousand, and the other one's only like a half a quote.
Correct.
So.
What do you got?
That quote is the worst-case scenario, it's had a bunch of hours built into it, in case it, computers don't like to talk to each other, so that she gives us the all-in price, if it goes bad, that's how much it costs, if it goes good, it should be significantly less than that, so that's why it's so expensive. And then that device, which is, is completely standalone, it picks all of the, right now, the call-out system uses four different companies that it has to go through before it makes the call spectrum, the internet's always down, uh, the program that makes the call, the SCADA system, there's multiple things that are linked to it, that one is the SCADA system and the device, and it works right by that one, and then.
So you're not troubleshooting who's that?
Nicole, I haven't broken this for two months.
Right, but with, right now, you got four, you're saying, so if spectrum's a problem, you gotta try to figure out if it's that, or if you gotta try to figure out, there's four variables, with this, there's one variable.
Quality IP, spectrum, ROG assist, and win nine-one-one is the four companies that picks, that we've been dealing with for, since I've been here, this hasn't worked.
Okay.
And this one is, is ROG assist, which is the SCADA company, which if it doesn't work, the plant doesn't work, and then that new company is it, there's no other.
So the new system is one.
This was kinda what, uh, Nicole had brought up about going south here.
Yes.
So this new, the eleven thousand dollar quote is everything we need?
At worst-case scenario?
Right, 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 but if we, we say yes tonight, that fixes it all?
No, just the call-out.
Just the call-out.
That's what I mean, like, the co-op test.
Call-out, yes.
Right.
And then we have to worry about upgrading that computer just to make it happen.
You guys remember, when those pipes broke, we had what, about four foot of water in that plant?
Well, I think it was more than that, because the, um, natural gas backup pump was totally submerged, and it's probably to the top, it's taller than me, and it was up in the oil and stuff, so.
And that system was not calling off to let, nobody had this issue.
Yeah, nobody, but, oh, you got down there's a little sub-pump like this big.
Right, so, I'm not a very smart man, but if that system doesn't work, then we're gonna end up paying more than eleven thousand, worst-case scenario, to fix everything, and then we're still gonna have to pay that, so why don't we do that if we have the money?
Is that the only quote we have? Do we need to get three?
The half a quote that he's, is a reference, the win nine-one-one is a program we use now, was outdated, which is part of the SCADA computers that don't support Windows eleven, so that would be a complete upgrade. Uh, it would, it takes multiple elements to get that upgrade, and that, that device is roughly two thousand bucks, and just to program the win one, nine-one-one program that would be needed, is between five and six thousand dollars. That's the apples-to-apples comparison, the other quote.
And this is the same phone as, the wastewater has, the Sentinel, we already have this, and I know Billy's happy with it.
Same company, yes.
Same company that we already have.
The way that kinda works is you got your main, your main computer, right? And it, it's just like all hardwired it. And then you got the computer, which communicates with the board, we'll call it a board, it communicates with the board. So like, if he's away, say a pipe does bust, he can get on the laptop and shut the wells off, shut it all down, and then get in and fix it, or whatever. If you go with this, it bypasses the computer and goes straight into the board, so that if the computer ever needs updated, it's not gonna affect it, because it's directly in the board. You know what I'm saying? That makes any sense.
So we need, if we go with the higher-than-expected eleven thousand dollar quote, do we still need to buy a new computer?
We still need upgraded, because.
Okay, so we need that and a computer, yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be okay if we have the money.
But we got a year roughly.
Windows ten is supported until October of next year.
Right.
Right, but right now, this system's not working, hasn't worked that bad yet, so it doesn't matter, either way, we still need that system.
It hasn't worked for years.
It worked, they said it worked up until like, the week before I started, actually. Yeah, I'm like, chances.
Call box.
Do large system work?
It wasn't, that wasn't that either, it worked the whole time.
Yeah.
It's the computer.
Yeah.
Ah, that is, it could work for years.
So do we have the money?
Yes. And we did get, we are updating some computers now too, because our, the computers are just ridiculous, how old they are. So the new IP company that's part of there, like, we are, so we, we do have, we have to.
We got them in sixteen.
Yeah, this is ridiculous.
Yeah, we all, we know, because we've bought computers multiple times since I've been on here. Computers are a one or two year kinda thing. I'd be okay with moving forward, my vote is yes.
Can we?
I don't know, we don't need to blow.
Yeah, we don't, we.
No, we can just tell Ryan to do it, I'm just verbally saying, I'm saying yes to the one that is.
It's gonna cost us more money if the water tower drains all the water out, you don't know about it.
Well, if we burn out those motors, those motors are probably seven thousand, eight thousand dollars a piece, and there's four of them.
Plus you have people coming in, down in the water, and Billy already has the system.
Yes, he does.
Familiar with it.
Right, I'm set up with that, okay.
Yes.
Good, good, okay, then we'll get on that tomorrow.
Wonderful.
Come see me.
I was gonna, it's in your ballpark now.
I don't have the quote, so you have to come bring it to me. Okay. See how that works? Alright, thank you. Ryan, do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
He's spent enough money already.
Alright, any council or guests last chance to speak before we go into executive session?
There is a quote coming to upgrade the computers, I talked to the technical director, I talked to the whole thing, so make it secure, just so you guys have an idea.
Computers for just your plan?
The SCADA computers.
Oh.
That control computers.
But we won't need that if we go with that, right?
Incorrect. We still need that. You cut out win nine-one-one, it's a six thousand dollar program.
Okay. You have something? You said wait till the end.
No, you guys.
It's very unfortunate.
That's why I said wait till the end.
Alright.
We know we're wrong, I don't agree with what you said, but.
Alright, well, I have seven oh one, uh, seven oh two, like, make a motion to enter an executive session, and it just counsels.
Yep, and Ryan, to discuss personnel.
Discuss personnel, alright.
I gotta use my one, two, real quick. Yeah, you, yeah.